...man's meeting. And we just came out of executive session to update the board on strategies relative to collective bargaining negotiations. Anyone have any announcements? Selectman Franco.
I've got two announcements. One, I wanted to remind members of the board and the public that there is a forum on land use policy sponsored by the League of Women Voters tomorrow evening. I believe it begins at 6:30 PM in this very room, the Selectmen's Hearing Room here at Town Hall. And then my second announcement is, I wanted to remind people that the Boston Athletic Association Half Marathon will be coming through the town on Sunday. It's an 8:00 AM start out at Franklin Park, and I think it should probably come down Pond Avenue and through Brookline sometime around 8:35 to 8:45, again on Sunday morning.
You're representing the board?
I am. I'm holding the tape for the women's winner of the race.
Right. And in the same vicinity, Pond Avenue and Route 9, I'll remind everybody that Route 9 is going to be closed for the demolition of the pedestrian bridge in Brookline Village. There's a rather complex set of detours, and my advice, and I hope as many people as hear this, more than that, follow the advice to try and stay away from the area and find alternate routes. Stay out of Brookline Village with your car this weekend.
Yeah, but we should note that we did get a memo from the IT Department, and there is information up on the front page of the town's website.
Right.
So if you're trying to figure out, if you live in the area and you may be impacted, whether you want to or not.
Yeah.
You can go to the town's website and you'll find the information you need to work around it.
And I note the message signs are up, and they're spreading the word, and more message signs will be going up as the day gets closer, I believe, if I recall the plan.
So, but just in general, the closing begins Friday evening and is scheduled to run through Monday evening, so it's...
Monday morning.
Monday, Monday morning, okay.
Right.
So it's truly pretty much the entire weekend.
Right.
Although they did tell us they might finish early and open up, but I don't think anyone should actually count on that.
Right. It's a possibility, but don't count on it.
So for details about the...
I'm gonna leave town.
Yeah.
Right.
So for details about the diversions and the detours and what's going on, BrooklineMA.gov, and there should be maps and additional information, as well as contact information for people in town who can give you more details and answer questions.
Right. Any other announcements?
But we should, we should just, sorry, to add to that, that the police and fire department are very aware of this, and they have restationed some of their vehicles, so people don't need to worry about, they can still call 911 and be served by our emergency services. They just may be coming from a slightly different place than usual.
Right.
I have two things. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Selectman Daley on the presentation at the devotion school meeting a couple days ago. I attended, and for someone who's sort of starting, not at ground zero, but down, you know, down a little bit, it was incredibly informative, very interesting. Maybe you want to go back to elementary school. But anyway, it was a very good presentation, and I'd like to congratulate you on that.
Oh, thank you.
The other thing is, I attended a meeting of the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association in Pearl Lake in Wrentham, and I got a lot out of it. I attended a collective bargaining workshop, which is an area that I know very little about, so it was very helpful, and a workshop on running a public meeting in a way that's not going to cause people to start throwing things at you, which is very, very, very interesting and helpful. And, you know, Lieutenant Governor Karen Folito was keynote speaker, and among other things, she praised our former colleague Sean Cronin profusely to the entire group, so that was...
Because I guess the rest of the state is learning what we already know.
Yeah, yeah. And I actually ran into Sean at the State House a couple days ago, and I was able to say, you know, "You're thought of very highly by the Lieutenant Governor," whatever that means. But the reason why I mention this is that I sort of urge other members of the board of Selectmen to attend these events. In my experience with respect to other conferences I go to, for example, the Bond Attorneys Workshop, which I go to every year, previously Public Pension Attorneys Conference, they used to go to every year, and other conferences, the benefit of that, of attending these conferences, many times can be quantified in terms of things you learn that you can bring back and begin a discussion that can result in major monetary savings. That's been my experience. So I got a lot out of this, and I really urge people to, you know, consider attending these conferences, Mass, you know, Municipal Association and Selectmen's Association, most of which I think are probably free, I don't know, but even if they do cost the town a little bit, it's well worth the cost, so.
Yeah, the big one is coming up in January.
Right.
Yeah, I went to that last year, and I thought that was very worthwhile. I know Mel joined me and...
I've been to a number of them over the years, both Selectmen's Association and Finance Committee Associations when I served on the Advisory Committee, and certainly found them helpful.
Yeah.
Can I just, can I just add? We had, as Bernard said, we had good attendance, and it was an interesting presentation. I think one issue came up, though, that I want to sort of follow up on, and Mr. Klechner, I want to ask if you will communicate with our Health Department, because there was a lot of concern about the artificial turf that is proposed for the devotion field. And in fact, I think it was like the next evening after we had this discussion, and that really was a lot of the, the people, the big point, sticking point. I think in general, the, there was approval of the large building that's going on there and everything else, but there was a lot of concern about the artificial turf. And I saw the NBC News had a thing, like the next night, about some of the many health concerns around artificial turf, and so I am somewhat worried about that.
It is a controversial subject. I was listening to it this morning on some news program. The Health Department did do a, what I would consider a sort of a summary of the studies that are out there. I'll provide it to you. I think the bottom line is, the jury's still out. There's really no conclusive evidence, but there is a lot of anecdotal concern, and, you know, of course, on the other side of the equation is having artificial turf extends the use of the field and allows it to drain better, and so on and so forth. So there is definitely some competing. But let me distribute that report that I've seen to you, and I think you can find it out.
Can I just add one thing to that? My understanding, and I have talked to a couple of people over the past few months about this who have been concerned about it, it's not so much the artificial turf as it is the infill. And the, the most common infill is this crumb rubber, which is, which is, you know, rubber tires that are smushed up. And kids have them, end up with them on their clothes and bring them home and that kind of thing. I think there may be other alternatives, and I'm wondering whether the Health Department could advise us about that. They may cost more.
Right.
But it may be worth the peace of mind.
Yeah, our landscape design person talked about the alternative, which is coconut fiber or something like that, and was...
Cork, and cork.
Yeah, and cork, I think. And she was saying, not only is it more expensive initially, but it's harder to maintain. But I actually checked with, my son no longer works with this company, but his last job up until this summer was with an organization that looked at risk analysis on various insurable things. And he was telling me to be wary of the tire surface, because, you know, tires have various substances in them that make, I mean, they're considered hazardous waste.
Correct.
Tires are. So he was going to, usually you have to subscribe to this company's entire database. I said, "Can we pay for a single opinion on this one topic?" And I don't, I don't know if we can get that or not, but we, we may get that through back channels, so I won't mention the company. But...
So I know that this is a topic that there's been a lot of conversation about. I know our Parks and Recreation Commission has also taken a very close look at this. So I think, I'm more than happy to review the literature that's out there, but I'm also interested in sort of the conversation and determinations that have been made previously when the issue's been looked at by town government.
Well, I think that recently Dr. Balsam sent us a memo, one of the health, one of the graduate students...
Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
Did a, did a look at all of, at the scientific papers about this, and again, the problem is the jury's out, maybe because the time isn't long enough, and sometimes these things take a long time to develop, who knows? So we just don't know. And, but maybe for our peace of mind, it would be better to have, go to one or the other, even though they're more expensive.
Yeah. The problem is, it would eat into the budget in other ways that, for the, for the whole, you know, the whole thing is all one budget. But I, I do think, certainly it was a concern to many parents, and I think it would be a concern to me if I had young kids at that school. So I think it's something we need to kind of look at a little more closely.
Okay. Is we done with the announcements? Moving on to the minutes of September 29th, I have already submitted some additions to the tape.
I did as well.
I gave some minutes as well.
I did too. We all did.
Right. So I'll move acceptance of the minutes as amended. All those in favor, Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Item B in our miscellaneous calendar is the question of authorizing the chair to execute the request for release of funds and certifications for FY 2016, is the federal fiscal year 2015, CDBG-funded activity. Joe Viola, tell us what's happening.
Good evening. Joe Viola, Assistant Director of Community Planning. And I'm here to request that the board authorize Chair Chairman Waschinsky to execute the request for release of funds specifically for the Brookline Avenue Playground Project. The town will be putting CDB funds into the parks and open spaces overall improvements. You might recall I was here a few weeks ago, asking for your authorization to submit an environmental review record. Essentially, this is part two to that environmental review record, and it serves as certification to HUD that we've had a public comment process, and that we are in compliance with federal regulations with regard to environmental review. So assuming a affirmative vote tonight, we'll submit the form to HUD. They have their own public comment period, and after that, Parks and Open Spaces is free to use the funding.
The material before us relates to some council on aging ones, not parks.
Yeah, the first, it's the first question, with just the, under B, B and C is the same cover memo.
Oh, okay, okay.
And it's just the first paragraph in, in the cover memo, it's just the, the council on aging stuff takes up more space on the, there's not a lot of detail here, but then...
It's the asterisk.
Right, it's the asterisk.
Okay. Doesn't, doesn't say Parks Department, but I assume that's okay.
That's in the, if you, in the underlying, the next page.
Okay.
Any questions, comments, assuming the stuff is in order? Then I'll move that we authorize the chair to execute the request for release of funds and certifications for FY 16, CDBG-funded activity. All those in favor, Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the next one is the question of approving and authorizing the chair to execute the following 2016 CDBG sub-recipient agreements, the Council on Aging for the Brookline Elder Taxi System, 31,753, and the Council on Aging Job Opportunities for Brookline Seniors, 14,553. Mr. Viola?
I would just add that we're, same thing, we're seeking the, the board's approval to authorize Chairman Waschinsky to execute these contracts. These are the first two of our eight public service contracts. There'll be a number of these before you in the upcoming weeks. Historically, the town has used its CDBG funding in public service programs to benefit elderly and youths. And assuming an affirmative vote tonight, the Council on Aging will be able to begin using their funding to fund these programs.
So I noticed in the materials here that this, the job training funds, training for eight seniors. I'm wondering if Selectman Daley can talk to any of the positive experiences that have come out of this.
Yeah, well, the, the, actually, the job opportunities have tended to be volunteer, or, or this is part of the, they're, they're not volunteer, because they do get some funding, but a lot of the senior center runs on, with the help of these people, and I think we've had some over here in Town Hall and a lot of different departments.
Right.
And some, a couple, a couple of them even got offered real jobs with the town, right?
Yes, they do. They've helped us out before. They do a great job.
They were, so it's, it's been like a great program for, for them, but also a great program for the town, because we've benefited from having them, their help and experience.
Any other questions, comments?
And I'll just say about the elder taxi system, and that's a, that's a program where people, the cab companies contribute toward this as, and we put some CDBG money toward it, and it gives discounted ride coupons for seniors. It's, it's one of the reasons I worry about our cab companies staying, staying healthy.
Therefore, I'll move approval and authorization of the chair to execute the following FY 2016 CDBG sub-recipient agreements, Council on Aging, Brookline Elder Taxi for 31,753, and Council on Aging Job Opportunities for Brookline Seniors Program, $14,553. All those in favor, Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last item on our miscellaneous calendar is the question of awarding and executing a contract for the restoration of existing stairs at Station Street in the amount of $14,950 with Park Landscape of Roslyndale. Mr. Ditto.
Good evening. These stairs connect the Kent Street parking lot and Station Street. They were instructed, they were constructed in 1982, so they're about 33 years old now, and they're in need some serious maintenance. We solicited proposals, of which we received three. Park Landscape was the low bidder at $14,950. Park Landscape has done two or three paths in the town within the last several years. The most recent is Rossin Path, and that was a very successful project. If you get a chance, you might take a look at it. So this contract will involve actually removing the existing treads and landing, replacing it with new concrete. There'll be a sealer coat that goes over the new concrete. The handrails will be sanded and painted, and the facade on Station Street will be repointed. The contractor is ready to go should you approve this contract. We'll give him a notice of proceed tomorrow. He anticipates about 10 working days to complete the project.
So I noticed that we're replacing like with like and not increasing handicapped accessibility here. I'm wondering why that is and if we're obliged to make it ida accessible.
I believe the parking lot's accessible from Kent Street. This is a, two flights of stairs, each probably nine to 10 steps, and a landing in between the two. It would be very difficult to make that accessible from Station Street.
It's, it's a pretty steep set of stairs. I don't know how you could make it accessible.
You'd almost need an elevator.
You could put a lift, similar to what we have on Beacon Street, to go from the upper portion up by Summit Hill down to the, the lower inbound section.
I guess that's a, that's another project, I think. Any other questions, comments? Therefore, I'll move that we award and execute the contract for the restoration of existing stairs at Station Street in the amount of $14,950 with Park Landscape of Roslyndale. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Excuse me, could I ask one question of Mr. Ditto?
Sure. Go for it.
In terms of the handicapped accessibility, are there adequate signs at Station Street directing people to the Kent Street entrance?
I'm not really sure what's up there for signage.
Because I think that that would, would be important, given the fact that we don't at current, currently have a way to get down on Station Street. If people know that there is a way on Kent, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Moving on to our main calendar, and we're actually right on time. And I wonder if any of our interviewees are here. We have a number of, ah, okay.
Thank you.
Are you Lauren?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a number of positions that we'll be interviewing. First one is for the Advisory Council on Public Health. Lauren Kosin-Binker? Come join us. Welcome, and thank you for applying.
But here, you're in Brookline?
Come to the podium, come to the podium, and you're on TV, so you need to...
Come right up to the microphone, then.
So, so our viewing audience, our vast viewing audience can, can hear you. You may laugh, but people do watch. Yeah, yeah, people stop me in the street. So speak into the mic, and why don't you tell us about yourself, and what brings you, what interests you about the public health and, and the council and...
Okay. I'll start saying something that it would be a very good point to understand the frame of the situation. We moved to Mucran in 2013 from Buenos Aires, Argentina, which means that we are quite new, if you want to think of the fact that we moved a family here.
Well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Two, three years later, or two years later?
Two years later, exactly two years later.
Okay.
We originally are from Argentina, and when I got my PhD in physiopathology and pancreatic cancer, we went as postdocs to Toronto, where we lived for approximately 10 years. And then we went back to Buenos Aires, and from there to Brookline. So the system, the town system you have here is quite new for us, which actually is something we very much appreciate. It's a very good way to go. It's not something that we are used to, so I'm not used to this type of circumstance. My original, going into public health, my original training is as clinical biochemist. I own and have a clinical laboratory in Buenos Aires, which is associated to a biomedical research center. My particular line of research is pancreatic cancer, but I've been trained in all the areas that are associated to clinical biochemistry. I mean, my residence was in clinical biochemistry, biochemistry rotating through all the areas that are involved, hematology, bacteriology. I'm thinking of areas that will come up very easily in public health in a general way. During several years also, I taught physiology and physiopathology. Interest in public health, or which is the area that is, could we say, that approaches more, that would be of more interest, is that generally, and here I'm putting what I've seen both in Buenos Aires and in Toronto, I don't have a practice, I'm licensed to practice here in the States, so I cannot practice in the States. So it's just as an observer, is that many times, from the moment a patient receives an indication, goes to the laboratory, and what is being understood by that patient of what was said, there's a very big distance. The message, the communication of the message, it's not always perfectly conveyed. So one of the things that I personally believe is important is to be able to communicate correctly, and people sometimes, or patients sometimes, are afraid to ask. I mean, he's a pharmacist, and that part he will tell, but many times they arrive to the pharmacy or to the lab and say, "I did not understand really what I was told," or, "Did I really have to have so many years of fasting for this analysis, and why?" Or, okay, let us say, a urine analysis, which we are not supposed to have a very big intake of vitamin C, because it happens to be that vitamin C gets dissolved in water and it's being secreted, excreted in urine. So if you are going to do a urine analysis for glucose, the last step is called an oxidative reaction, which means that that person will test positive to glucose in urine, but because it had a very high intake of vitamin C, not because there was any glucose. So there's those little, small details that perhaps are important, but that are not communicated. On the other hand, other things that are perhaps more related to everyday life, how should I go, we are going to take a flu shot. How should I go to that flu shot? Should I take it or no? Sometimes those are messages that have to be well conveyed, and it's obvious that perhaps English is not my mother tongue. I do happen to also speak, well, my mother tongue is Spanish, but I also speak French and Romanian. So it does help, if you get, if there's some diverse population, as you do find here in Brookline, actually, you find it all over Boston. If a person can go to someone that can speak that same tongue, or at least feel comfortable of asking a question in a tongue that might feel more comfortable. So being able to perhaps help other people in communicating messages or answering questions, or even perhaps if I don't have the answer, perhaps I know how to get to the answer, or better know how to direct that person to whom they should go. Those are more everyday life. Not so everyday life, it happens to be when emergencies come up. And it's important to be prepared for those emergencies, and I know that Brookline is really very interested in developing and in being, I mean, a leader in the area of, okay, if an emergency comes up, as best as we are, or cover as many fronts as we are, be tried, try to be as possibly well-prepared, I mean, nothing is perfect, but as best as that would be possible to achieve. Well, it was last week that we went to the Medical Corps Reserve, and there was a meeting across the street over there. So that's another area. It's the Medical Corps Reserve of Brookline, and I think it was cert that they are looking also into that topic. So that's another area that I personally think it's important, and that is also due to a personal experience. When, I don't know how many of you ever heard of what happened in Buenos Aires in July 18th, 1984, when it was the bombing of the... 1984, when it was the bombing of the Yarmouth there? No? Okay. At that moment, I was doing my residence, and I was pregnant, thank God. Thank God morning sickness. And the Yarmouth building, that's the building where most of the Jewish community life is organized in Buenos Aires, was just two blocks away from Ofical de Clinicas, that's where I was doing my residence. So my aunt had passed away recently, and my mother asked me if I could go and pay the bill for, I mean, for the cemetery. I was pregnant with my eldest son, so it was the first two months, so I had morning sickness. I was waiting at the queue to pay the bill, wanted to throw up, so I went out on the street luckily, and at that moment was when they came in and crashed into the building, and everything collapsed. Luckily, I was outside, but there were many people that were inside. Because I was at that moment doing, I was rotating from emotherapy, I was also part afterwards of the rescue team. That was an emergency. It's better not to have it.
Yeah.
But yes, it's important, all of those that can assist, in whatever way that assistance can be provided, be there, and as many languages as you can have. Well, in those critical moments, it's also good to have them. So mainly, those areas I can think of in different ways that sort of attract me to the area of how could I help in public health. And last but not least, sometimes it's where do you need, where you have a greater need, because I can tell you, yes, perhaps it's communicating, perhaps it's looking at how to have a better preparedness for emergencies, and perhaps it's something down the road that shows up, who say we need someone that can explain certain topics of kidney failure in Spanish or in French or Romanian, because you have this community that needs that help, and you could sort of help us with that. Or sometimes it seems, okay, let us just get food assembled for people that would be in need for that, so that's also another area that comes up.
Have you met our health director, Dr. Balsam?
No.
You should have a conversation with him. You might find that very useful. Selectman Daly.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you are obviously very qualified, as is, it's your husband?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. But unfortunately, we have four very qualified people, very tremendously qualified, it's almost embarrassing how great everybody is. For the, we have one slot open on there now, and I know we've got a second one coming soon. So I don't know how that will work out, but there's also a Friends of Public Health that sometimes people get on, or you mentioned CERT and the Medical Reserve Corps, sometimes people get involved with those, and then, you know, next time there's an opening on the advisory committee, you can work your way up. But I, so I don't, I'm not saying you won't get on, but I'm saying there's hot competition for this, the...
It's okay.
The slots.
I'll tell you the truth, I volunteered. I don't come from, I don't know the word, it's right, the political background, so when I sent in the application, it was to volunteer.
Right.
Okay.
So there's no need.
Okay. Let me just ask you, because we were talking about it a few minutes ago, do you know anything about the dangers associated with artificial turf, which is made from tires?
She goes, she's a scientist.
She might know.
Turf?
It's, you know, the artificial turf.
Artificial grass on...
Yeah, they make it with...
The one that's used for hockey.
Yeah.
Hockey fields.
Soccer fields and football fields.
Soccer fields or in football.
Green grass.
Field hockey, I used to play.
Ah, okay.
Actually, La Leona's, which were, were, are at times.
But they're made with ground-up tires, old tires, and so some people now are feeling that there's many health risks associated with that.
Okay, I'll tell you a very big health risk if you play on that, and it's a very initial health risk.
Uh-huh.
If you happen to fall on that...
Yeah.
You're really going to have a very bad time because it burns.
Ah, yeah.
So my first thing that comes up to my mind, because I did play many years ago, too many years ago, when I was a teenager...
That wasn't so many years ago.
Yeah, too many, twenty-five at least, is make sure to wear long pants, even if it's summer, even if Buenos Aires. Summers in Buenos Aires are in Celsius, thirty-five Celsius degrees, which I don't recommend.
That, I know, that's hot, that's like ninety or something, right?
Okay. Still, if it's summer, still use long pants, because if you happen to fall, so that would be the first thing, and that's even before whatever intoxication you can get because of the material.
Okay. What about, so that, what I've been told is that there's a high level of selenium in the tires.
I really don't.
Okay.
It's not that field of expertise. If you want to talk about pancreatitis, if you want to talk about nephrology, if you want to talk about nephrology, I can go, really, that field is not mine.
Okay. Okay.
Well, let me ask you this, I mean, you did offer an opinion as to what happens when you fall on the artificial turf. Do you know whether that is significantly different than falling and scraping yourself on grass? I mean, I seem to recall as a youth, getting burned from, you know, slipping on grass.
I didn't, I just shared, I put it this way, it's not an opinion, I just shared a personal experience. I did, I did play a lot of hockey, a field hockey, not ice hockey. I wouldn't be able to skate, so, but that is always for me to play ice hockey. But yes, field hockey. I did fall, obviously, on grass, and I did fall on this type of surface. It's a huge difference. On grass, okay, you fall, you do get hurt, but in this case, it does actually...
It's slippery, you know?
It's totally slippery. When you slide and the skin, sort of, you know, when...
Yeah, the friction.
The friction, when you're going to fall, you're going to get hurt, but in the other case, it really, but that's my personal experience, it's not, I'm not telling you, it's not an opinion so much else, okay, if, when I fell in this surface, okay, it could be worse. When I fell in the other surface, it did make, I mean, it was really very painful and, but that's a person, once again, that's a personal experience, not an expert opinion. Okay. I'm just making it clear. What I remember when I was sixteen years old, and I played hockey, field hockey.
I have a nephrology question. So one of the active conversations in nephrology is whether older people should be diagnosed with chronic kidney disease, or it's just sort of a result of aging. I'm wondering if you have an opinion on the topic.
My first opinion is that the best you can do is in that case, ask a nephrologist.
Okay.
I'm going to say that physi pathology works in general, yes. In the other case, I'm not licensed here in the States.
I think her husband raises his hand.
Sure. And you're up?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to come over to the microphone.
Yeah, 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 right. So why don't, you're up next, because you have stepped forward to be on the Advisory Council of Public Health, so why don't you tell us about yourself?
First of all, I want to add something to the question of you did. It's, you asked for a reason why you, there is a difference between natural grass and fake grass. Why you can be damaged from the non-natural grass is the same reason why we are using tires in cars, because when you apply the brake, the friction will stop the car. In natural grass, there is humid, and if you fall on the grass, you will not burn yourself. I hope this explained your question.
So why don't you tell us about your interest to be on the Advisory Council of Public Health?
Well, I was at a pharmacy for many years in one side of the counter, collecting, I believe, a lot of experience from patients coming to the pharmacy. But I believe that one thing is try to solve problems for a person, but public health involve to attend thousand or millions of persons, depending on the, how big is the department attending a city or a state or nation.
Fifty-eight thousand here.
Okay. In the best case, a pharmacist can know, I don't know, hundreds of cases, but most probably cannot influence a big amount of people. And that is the mission of a department, public of health. And I believe that I can apply what I learned at the school pharmacy, and the experience that I collect with people at the pharmacy, and trying to apply this knowledge to a big number of people.
Yeah, I had a question. I noticed on your application, you put school meal options down as something you were interested in.
Yeah.
And it's very hard to get kids to eat healthy stuff, so what are your thoughts on that?
I have my personal opinion. The problem that I am seeing is that because of the constraint in the time that kids has to spend at lunch, they choose probably food that they believe that they are processing faster, but not necessarily the good for them. Another thing that I include in my application is, I know that I write very shortly, but it's special meals for special necessities, like celiac persons, that in my understanding, is not always available at schools.
Yeah, I don't know, I assume at the high school they have it, but I don't know at the elementary schools if they have any options like that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Can I ask?
Sure, go.
I noticed on your application, you mentioned your interest in addressing electronic cigarettes.
Yes.
And what are your thoughts about how we should deal with that?
I have a personal experience, not with electronic cigarettes, but because of common cigarettes. Unfortunately, my father passed away because he get a COPD, and my mother has had a hard time for many years. Electronic cigarettes seems to be cool for many people, especially for young people, but there is risk associated to this, because first of all, not all the companies disclose what is in the composition of the electronic cigarettes. Most probably, all of them contain nicotine, and most of you probably know that we are trying to get out people from normal cigarettes using nicotine treatments. The other, or the second big problem is maybe this is an introductory to other stuff that can be coming, especially if it is not regulated. It's hard to address how to fight against this, because obviously, it's a business behind. And you have to be very carefully letting know the people what is going on. Some things we are know, are known, and others are not known, but one key is trying to do not affect the rights of people. Let's say an example, one company tried to sell electronic cigarettes, and they disclosed that the cigarette is only, has water inside. However, people that are around are not knowing necessarily that this particular electronic cigarette is not dangerous or harmful for other people.
Well, as Selectman Daly said, we have four applicants for one position. I would suggest you have a conversation with our health director, Dr. Balsam, who's very approachable, and he'll love talking to you, and perhaps, you know, he has some ideas in addition to this on how you can get involved, and, because he's got...
My wife, sorry, I interrupt you.
Right, sure.
But it's not in our mind trying to compete or...
Right.
Or...
Yeah. Well, that's why I suggest, talk to Dr. Balsam, he'll find a place for you.
Or trying to obtain something from this position. We try to collaborate with the town in the best way that...
Sure.
...we can, and could be assistant, the selectmen, giving an advertise or not, whatever.
Right.
It's not, we are not applying for a job.
Right, right.
Well, we appreciate your willingness to give of your time. Thank you.
Yeah, and help the community.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on, is Donna Hollenberg here for the Arts Commission? I see Ann Myers here for the Economic Development Advisory Board. I know you've been active, you're currently the co-chair, so tell us what you've been up to, and what are your goals for the future in EDAB?
I actually can't find, I'm actually moving the day after tomorrow, and I couldn't find the stuff that I wrote. I'll tell you.
I hope you're moving in Brooklyn.
I am.
Okay.
I'm actually moving closer to Coolidge Corner.
Okay.
You gave us a scare there for a second.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I wouldn't be here if I were even there. As I think many of you know, I have been focused for the last couple of years, particularly on the commercial areas, and working with the merchants in town, and working with property owners, and people at Town Hall to see what we can do to upgrade the commercial areas and keep them vibrant. We worked on a vibrancy study a couple of years ago with a number of the merchants, particularly in Coolidge Corner. I go every month to the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association meetings, I'm on the Steering Committee, I think it's called, for Brooklyn Local First. So we've been, we've been trying to help people, particularly positioning the commercial areas in town to take advantage of the fact that we're... to take advantage of the fact that we're close to Boston, we're on the Green Line, all that stuff, even though all the new developments in Newton have free parking. And we've been working on parking issues with them. And then broader picture, many of you were at the Planning for a Bread at Brookline workshop that we had in the spring, and we're planning another one on December 7th to follow up on that. Again, a lot of the work is to find ways to position the town. And we were doing this when, in the late 2000s, when the economy was terrible. We were working to position the town to be in a, in a good position to take advantage of opportunities that were going to come up. We knew the economy would turn at some point. We didn't know when. We didn't know what was going to happen, but we wanted to be sure that we were ready. And now, we have a lot of projects that are starting. As you know, development projects in Cleveland Circle, and Route 9 is gonna open next, the hotel's gonna open in the spring, and Children's Hospital is gonna get started. And we need to work on finding, there are a number of other potential parcels that may come up, and we need to be ready to take advantage of opportunities that come up. Again, all in the, with the goal of increasing the commercial tax revenue to the town.
You brought up the vibrancy study briefly, and I just want to compliment you, commend you on the hard work. I believe that study was released in 2013?
Two summers, yeah.
And it's, it was incredibly useful, a valuable read, I think, for anybody who's interested in knowing more about the health and the vitality of our commercial district. So thank you for taking that project on, and I appreciate it reading the results.
Thank you. Good. And we're working on implementing some of the, some of the suggestions. And the Coolidge Corner Parking Lot Study, which is not happening yet, but the one that Town Meeting passed last spring, we're waiting till the library decides what they're doing before doing that. But that's one of the things that came out of that, of that work.
Well, I, I know, I've worked with you, and I've worked with other members of EDAB, and I'm always impressed with what EDAB has done and the way you approach it. We've had a lot of, we've had quite a few successes, some of which are, some of which have come online, and some are about to come to fruition. And I think EDAB has a great track record, and I thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your hard work.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's Donna?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, you're up for the Arts Commission.
Yes.
Welcome. Tell us what draws you to this commission.
Well, I saw the notice that you needed someone, and I recently retired as a professor of English at the University of Connecticut, and I live in Brookline. And my field is literature, particularly poetry. And I thought, now that I'm retired and don't have to commute back and forth, I could do something for the town. So that's why I'm here, to offer my services. And I know we have a Brookline laureate, poet laureate, and I would be a good person to select that person, since my field is poetry, and I write books about poetry, and other things too. I also volunteered for a couple of other things already that I really enjoyed. One was for the Olmsted House. Are you aware of, they had a creative writing prize? Did you know that?
No.
For high school kids?
No.
It was wonderful. And I was the judge of the creative writing prize. But there could be more things like that. One idea I had, I do not know if this would be something that would work, but I also was a volunteer in the Bridges Program. Do you know anything about that? That was at the senior center. This is what gave me the idea. This was, the social worker there paired seniors with high school stu-- no, yeah, with high school students. And I thought, you know, it was nice. And I thought, would be really interesting, I think, to get high school students to interview older people, you know, get them to write about their experiences. Get older people to write about their experiences in the presence of high school students. You know, I once did that at the University of Connecticut with college students. I did an oral history program on the '60s. I thought UConn in the '60s would be interesting for students, and so we did an oral history project. And I myself have published in oral history. I think it's fun. I think it's, it's nice to bring generations together. That's what the Bridges Program did. That's what made me think of it. So that's an idea. I don't know, maybe it could be done in connection with the Brookline Historical Society or something like that? A pairing of the Arts Commission with the Brookline Society, Historical Society?
Selectman Daly.
No, I, I love that idea.
Okay, good.
A number of years back, we were responsible for my husband's elderly aunt, and we had her at an assisted living place nearby. And I kept saying to my kids, you know, you should go write down what she's, what she says, because she's talking about, you know, when the milk got delivered on, by the horse-drawn carriage.
And kids don't know anything about this, yeah.
It was really a very different world.
Yes.
I never could get them interested, but I think--
Oh, you couldn't get them interested?
I could not get them to do it.
Oh, okay, well--
But I think it was, I think it's a great idea.
Maybe we could.
Maybe if it wasn't your own relative, you'd be more interested.
Yeah, maybe, that's right. But there are other things too, I think. You know, I think that other writing projects would be fun to introduce.
Well, I think that's, wasn't it you, Selectman Franco, that was saying you'd like to see the Arts Commission do more and the--
Outside of the visual arts?
Because that's what they tend to focus on.
On the visual arts. That's what I noticed with the Olmsted Prize. There were many more, I was doing the creative writing stuff. I did this with, do you know the park ranger Mark Swartz? He was the one who got me involved in this. But they had so many more entries in the Olmsted Prize for drawings than they did for writing. And I would like to see more young people write, you know, they need that. And so, you know, we gave, we ended up giving prizes pretty much to everyone who entered, which was cool, because I wanted to encourage them, you know? That was the purpose, yeah.
Well, I would second your, your idea of getting more people to write. As a lawyer, I see the importance of writing and what happens when people come into our lawful profession without being able to put two sentences together. So I applaud that. The other thing is, we have a poet laureate, as you mentioned. I've never seen this person. Seems to me that, you know--
Wow.
We ought to bring--
That's a really good idea. Bring this person to the schools.
To the schools, to Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
And, you know, help all of us understand, you know, the role of the poetry can play, even in the--
That's right.
--fondating stuff that we do here.
Yeah, that's a good idea. That's a good idea. I've never seen that person either. I mean, I know there is this person. It's only two years, right? This is the second?
Yeah.
So there could be things--
There was a prior poet laureate.
Yeah, but this is--
So it's been a couple more years.
Oh, I see. They, how long are they poet laureate for?
Two years?
It's a two-year term.
It's a two-year term.
If we're in the second, the first year of the second--
Because I know, you know, national things, poet laureates are involved, and they have to do things.
Well, the, you're sort of in luck here because the Arts Commission is a big commission, and they do have term limits. So there are four people having to go off due to term limits.
Oh.
And only three new candidates.
Oh, really?
So I'll say it's looking good for you.
Well, I really, I do want to be of use, you know? I mean, that's, you know, now I can do things in the town.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being interested, stepping forward. And the last interview tonight is Cheryl Anne Snyder. Ms. Snyder, for the Women's Commission.
Hello.
And you've been on it now.
Yes, for three years.
Ah, so why don't you tell us what you've been up to and why you want to continue and--
Sure. I volunteered with the Women's Commission, helping out with their annual clothing drives. The Women's Clothing Drive to support Dress for Success is coming up in November. And we do a children's clothing drive in January. And I volunteered with those before I even joined the commission, and as a matter of fact, have been running them now for several years and am currently running the November Dress for Success Clothing Drive. This year, we were able to work with both Bank of Canton and Capital One 360. And they are both interested in accepting clothing donations ahead of time, which is a huge help for us. As you know, we can only have the room at the police station for about a day and a half, and it makes it very difficult for people to drop things off. And they often ask to drop off things ahead of time, and we just don't have any space. So it's been, it's been great to be able to work with the two banks and create this new ability to collect things ahead of time. We're hoping it makes a huge difference this year.
It sounds like you made yourself indispensable.
I don't know about that, but I am the treasurer now, so.
Anyone have any questions, comments?
Thanks for stepping up and saying it.
No problem.
That's without saying. Well, if I don't see any other questions or comments, thank you, and I suspect you'll hear from us shortly.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
But we're not going to vote tonight.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to warrant articles. And the first warrant article is Article 9. And this is an article which is, affects the Public Works Department and calls for a public hearing on the, when we set water and sewer rates. So Messrs. LaScollier and Frye, why don't you tell us what this is all about as petitioners?
Hello, it's David LaScollier, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 11. It's very simple. What we would like to do, or what this warrant article is advocating, is to open a conversation about the policy and practices and opportunities to take into account the voice of the people of Brookline. So the warrant article, the intent of the warrant article is to open a conversation. And we believe in order for the conversation to be meaningful and for the hearing, to assist the Board of Selectmen in setting policy and direction regarding water and sewer practices. The rates, yes, and other issues about equity and possibly discounts for low-income residents. Actually, the Board of Selectmen has a great deal of flexibility in setting the rates. Unlike, say, with property taxes, where you have a load of laws and requirements. With respect to water and sewer rates, the Board of Selectmen has a great deal of choice. And when we look at other communities, we see that the structure and the strategies and the methods used by various communities are very different. There's a great diversity in the way the burden of supporting our water and sewer system is distributed among communities. So here, we'd like to set up a process with the hearing. It doesn't have to be actually at the crunch time, at the end of June. We're basing it on the estimated information that's available in February. The MWRA issues a provisional assessment, and this year, it was very close to the final assessment, slightly higher, about $121,000 difference. To take that information and an analysis of impacts and what we specify in the warrant article to provide those who choose to participate in the conversation with enough information, because it is an arcane and technical subject. So that's, I think, what we're trying to do with this warrant article. I think Ernie wants to also provide some--
Sure. Comments? Thank you. Good evening. Ernie Frye, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. I became involved with this warrant article, or not the warrant article, but the condition of setting water rates maybe a couple of years ago, when I was looking at the water rates for my own condo association, and noticing that they were kind of like taken off, taking off, high, you know, getting a lot higher. And I didn't understand why. Looking back through the history of the town, I learned about the introduction of the base rate and step arrangement that was introduced back in 2010. And just did some playing around with that with regard to, you know, my own condo and how it works, and especially the step rate, which increased, which has a minimum, minimum level of 700 per meter, 700 cubic feet per meter. And since I live in a condo and my meter, the meter in my building services six units, six families, I said, wait a minute, that, why is it based on a meter? Why should it not be based on a family consumption or something of that nature? So it raised an awful lot of questions in my mind as to how things were, were being done with regard to it. And I began conversations with the Water and Sewer Division to find out how they did stuff, and I could get information from them as to how it worked. And basically, I came away with the idea that there was a lot involved in trying to get this right. And there was no way that I or any other individual would be able to determine, you know, what, what's the best solution for all this? It really required participation from the citizens and other people in town who, who have talents along these lines. Went back and looked through the Town Meeting, Board of Selectmen meetings where these rates were approved. And I went back to many years, 10 years or so, and found that the rates are set as of July 1st for the following fiscal year. And, or for that fiscal year. And basically, the rates are presented to the Board of Selectmen on the last or the next to the last meeting in, before July 1st. It didn't appear to me that there was a lot of information provided to the selectmen prior to that meeting. And there were no public hearings at all for them. The one exception to that was when the rates were changed. When this base rate was introduced, there was a public hearing, and that was appropriate. The comments that were entertained, were offered by Town Meeting members at that time, were generally disregarded. At least, that's my impression, and others will probably, will disagree with that, I'm sure. But it, their recommendations were, let's put off this rate change until we have a little bit more information from people in the town. That suggestion was, you know, was discarded. And at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, the rates were approved, the base rates were introduced, and, and we have what we have now. I found, or my sense was that the Board of Selectmen really should open up this process to the town, to the town through a public hearing. And in addition to that, the, in order for it to be beneficial, the rates should, they should have some ideas to what the rates are prior to that meeting. And we, you know, just thought maybe 30 days would be an appropriate amount of time for that lead, for that lead time. And let people, you know, dwell on it and come up with whatever. But we want people to come to a, come to a hearing and-- to come to a, come to a hearing and give an idea as to what they felt should be the basis for the structure for the rates, and just kind of give some experiences to what they're paying for water. The amount that is paid for water is a pretty substantial amount of money. It's like seven, I believe the number is 17% of the, of the, the amount paid for water is like 17% of what the real estate tax is. So it's a substantial amount of money that is paid to the town for water, and it deserves the attention of, or the opportunity for the citizens to be able to present their opinions to the Board of Selectmen so that the rates can be appropriately agreed to and set by the Board of Selectmen. So that's kind of where I'm at, and I urge favorable action on this warrant article. Thank you.
I see Mr. Russell in the back. Do you have any comments on the impact of this warrant article, and are there other ways that we can accomplish the same thing?
Well, first off, let me start by saying that we received our preliminary rates from the MWRA, our preliminary assessments for water and sewer back, it was on March 11th, I believe, of this year. I received an email from the MWRA with final rates on June 24th, which is why there's the mad scramble to begin on the agenda for the last public meeting before July 1st. We, as the Public Works Department, don't object to having some sort of a public hearing. We do have some reservation with issuing, let's say, a report 30 days in advance of that public meeting that don't have final numbers to them. We'll basically be working on preliminary numbers, which more than likely will be different than the final rates. That's our reservation there, is to basically give out numbers or projections that are inaccurate. The other thing that, keeping in mind, is that the MWRA, there's not a lot of moving parts in my budget. Basically, the MWRA makes up 75% of my budget. So essentially, what their rate structure is going to be, or ratings is going to be, is going to, ours is going to mimic that. The only other, I call moving part, is that, is the salaries, which were bound by union contracts, and then debt service, which may or may not go up or down, depending on the year, whether some matures or not, or whether we're asking for more. So other than that, essentially, everything else stays the same. So there's not, again, a lot, a lot of moving parts in my budget, with the exception of the MWRA assessment, again, which the final rates aren't given to me until the end of June. As far as the, I guess--
And do we, we have to set the rate before the end of the fiscal year?
I believe so, correct.
So if you get your final rate in June, and we have to set the rate by the end of June, is that right?
Correct.
So there's no way we could give 30 days' notice?
Well, again, our reservation is the fact that you could do that, but it's going to have inaccurate data.
Well, yeah, so the public hearing would be on hypothetic, it would be on estimates, which would then be subject to revision.
Right. But I mean, it's not just, I mean, it's not just that we don't have the final numbers, but they're asking us to state our opinion of how we're going to apportion those numbers prior to having the public hearing, which doesn't make sense to me.
With all due respect, we do this routinely every year when we pass the town budget. We put a financial proposal out in February, then we go to town meeting and pass the budget, making assumptions about what the legislature is going to give us in state aid, in Chapter 90 money, in Chapter 70 money, education aid. So I'm unconvinced that putting out preliminary numbers is going to lead to the downfall of the Water and Sewer Department.
I put it like that, but, yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, it just seems to like, I feel like, what's the point of having the public hearing, though, if we've already had to state what we're going to do, you know, with the numbers? I mean, I like to have my mind not made up when I have a public hearing, because I like to take into account what people say. So if we've already gone through it and said, okay, we think this is how we're going to do it this year, and we publish that 30 days late, and then have a public hearing, I don't, just seems to me like it's doing things backwards.
Help me understand how that's different than what we do with the town budget. If we put out a proposal and we say, this is what we want to do, and we go through a month-long process where we hold public hearings and take comment and objection, and sometimes we make some changes to the town budget and sometimes we don't, but certainly have a conversation over the course of months based on our preference, the administration's preference for how we allocate funds.
This is pretty specific. They want--
Well, why don't we hear from the public, and then we'll bring the discussion into the board. Is there a member of the public who wishes to address us?
Thank you.
Mr. Benka.
Hi, I'm Dick Benka, former Selectman, and--
Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. The reason I'm here is because when we went to the current rate structure in 2010, I think it was actually 2011 that it was implemented, I was the Selectman who worked with the consultant and with the Water and Sewer Department in putting the current general rate structure into place with a base rate and a smaller rate for the first 700 cubic feet of usage in a quarter, and then a higher rate for the remainder. And I was, we all just came from a, an advisory committee, subcommittee meeting about this issue, and Mr. Russell pointed out the fact that we don't have the final MWRA rates until almost the end of June, and it's impossible to set the final water rates for the town without having the MWRA rates. That led us to a discussion. One question that is going to be asked to Town Council is, could the rates be set in August? Could they be set August 1st? Could they be set August 15th, retroactive to July 1st? We don't know the answer to that definitively, but that is a question that the subcommittee is going to pose to Town Council. Let's assume that you can't do that. Where I think it's fair to say the discussion went was that what Mr. Laskoye and Mr. Frye are concerned about are the more general issues of how rates are allocated between single-family homes and multi-unit homes, whether there should be a larger exemption for the elderly, for low-income elderly, whether there should be an exemption for the low income, sort of broader policy issues that really don't necessarily turn on whether the MWR rate ultimately is 1% higher or 1% lower. And the, I think it's fair to say that the general direction in which the subcommittee was going was that Mr. Laskoye, Mr. Frye, Mr. Russell, the Water and Sewer Department, would have a discussion about what's workable, when it could be done, and how much demand that would put on the staff in the Water and Sewer Department, with the idea of having, if there's going to be a public hearing, having this public hearing after the preliminary rates come out, before there's the crush at the end of June, so that if there are some broad policy issues, they could be raised and addressed and surfaced, actually, during that public hearing process. So the guys are going back to talk to each other and to work on this issue. It's going to come back to the subcommittee. They are going to be meeting prior to the full subcommittee, full advisory committee meeting next Tuesday--
Okay.
--to get the recommendations back. And the idea being that you could sort of address the issues that are really latent in the request for a public hearing without getting into the precise details of what the rates would be. With that being said, let me just comment that the rate-setting, the process that we put in place back in 2011, where we instituted a base rate, was designed to do a couple of things. It was designed to bring some rate stability, some revenue stability, to the town, because prior to that, the entirety of the collection for water and sewer depended on usage, and as usage went up, or generally, as it went down, there would be shortfalls in revenues. And by putting a portion of that cost into a base rate, you provided some rate stability for the town. It also recognizes the fact that there are costs that don't depend on usage. You have to have the pipes there. You have billing, you have collections, you have customer service, all of which has to be in place regardless of whether somebody is using 10 gallons of water or 100 gallons of water. You know, if a couple leaves to go to Florida for a couple of months, the pipes are still there to provide the capacity to serve them when they come back. So the structure that we put in place was one that was designed to reflect the reality of cost causation, and as, if you look at the analysis that Mr. Laskoye did, basically, it's pretty fair. There's not a lot of deviation between the single-family homes and multifamily homes for the same kind of usage. Now, the multifamily are slightly less. At the beginning, they were slightly more. I think that's probably because there was a tweak to the base rate this past year, but you're within $20 on a $1,700 bill, and in 2013, you were within $13 on a $1,600 bill, between the highest and the lowest for 100 and 2,800 cubic feet of usage in a year. So the, I think it was agreed at the subcommittee that there's really not a huge equity issue here, but there may be some policy issues, you know, do we want to create special rates for the elderly? I think anybody over 65 should get a--
[laughing]
And how old are you? Over 65. And the other equity issue that was addressed was the fact that the rate per unit fell slightly as somebody used more water, but that makes sense, because, again, you have these fixed costs that are incurred regardless of usage. So despite the write-up, I think the equity issues are not, it was conceded, and I sort of agree, that the equity issues are not burning issues that we're facing, but that there might be some other policy questions that might be addressed, but they can be addressed outside of the question of the precise MWR rate at the, you know, the last five days of the fiscal year. Stay tuned.
Okay.
Mr. Laskoye.
Hi. Well, thank you, Mr. Benka. I couldn't have said it better myself. I wanted to say, sort of touching on what he said, and I was reluctant to get into the weeds in my initial presentation, and it came with a null hypothesis that was the problem with the structure of the rates. I did the calculation, I did the analysis, and I sort of want to put that aside. We're okay, pretty much okay in that area. We did find that there is a trend away from equity gradually, and at some point in the future, we may need to go back and revisit that. It's just like when you put a pipe in the ground, it starts to rust, and eventually, it's going to need to be repaired.
Unless it's PVC.
Hmm?
Unless it's PVC.
Right. And then, I wanted to also just address what Ms. Daly was saying. We're talking about a hearing. It doesn't have to be crunched in at the end of the year. The conversation could be earlier, after we have the provisional, gather the hearing. Many times, you have hearings, and then the vote comes later, or the decisions come later.
Right, but I'm just going to say, my problem with this, I have no problem with having a hearing, and I just want to say, in your write-up, where you say there was only one other year where we took public comment, I've been sitting here for a long time, and I don't think we've had people wanting to comment. I can't remember us ever turning away people who wanted to comment, even if it wasn't a hearing. But my concern is, where you say, 30 days in advance, we have to make known any proposed changes to the fees, charges, rates, or payments, means that we would have to have the presentation from the Water and Sewer Department, we would have to think it over, we would have to kind of say, okay, here's what we're going to do with it, and publish that, and then 30 days later, have the hearing. And I'm just saying, once we go through the analysis and say, okay, here's what we're going to do, the hearing information is much less effective than if you talked to us before, we kind of make up our minds what we're going to do. So that's, I just have a problem with the way this is worded.
The word estimates is in there. That's not the final recommendation based upon the MWRA assessment. That's an estimate. It's just something for the purposes of discussion.
Yeah, but then you get very specific, and this is where I'm quibbling with you--
Yes.
--about fees, charges, rates, or payments. You get very specific about what we have to specify prior to that hearing, and I'm suggesting it's not really in your interests to force us to go through the whole process and get, and, you know, come out with, you know, the whole analysis and say, okay, here's what we're doing. You may comment upon it, however, we've already gone through the whole process and made up our minds, but--
I think it's a fair point.
You know, so I would say, take some of that language out.
As Mr. Benka has described the process with the advisory committee, we're going to go back and revisit the language, and I, I think that's a fair comment, and I want to, I'm going to be working with Pam Lodesh to do that, so.
Good.
And just net, Mr. Laskoye, when you're, when you're, when you're looking at this and you're starting to get into the details, Board of Selectmen shall distribute to all town meeting members and make available to the public an annual report. So would, would that require to be mailed, snail mail?
Actually, it's being done already.
Yeah, so can we put it on the website?
No, that is already being done. The law, the enabling legislation requires a report. The town's doing a report, the town annual report. There's a section in there on water and sewer, page 94.
Right, there's a glossy book--
Yeah, the book with the--
--that gives us the tests of the water. Is that the report?
No, no, this is the one that the town puts out.
Town annual report.
Oh.
The annual report that the town publishes already has a report that essentially meets these requirements. The only additional fee, I think, would be a little bit more information on impact. The home free, very little change. On most of these things, there's very little change, because there's already a report in place. The Board of Selectmen already has that requirement under chapter, whatever it is. I might have it here.
It's the Enabling Legislation of Water and Sewer--
That's that MGL 30A?
Yeah, no, no.
No.
41, Section 69B. It says that the Board of Selectmen shall fix just and equitable rates and issue a report every year. So you're doing that.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
You're in compliance.
Well, I'm looking forward to your working with Mr. Russell and the advisory subcommittee.
We've been working with him ongoing, and--
And any help we can--
I owe him a debt of a lot of advice and counsel.
Yeah, feel free to call me if you think I can assist.
Okay.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this? Any other comments from the board? We're not going to, being that this is, there's, there's action going on, I'm very interested to see what comes out of that process, and hopefully, there's something comes out of it that we can all agree to, so I'm going to--
I would just comment that, given that we are kind of, not held hostage exactly, but we are stymied in terms of publishing final rates until we get the information from the MWRA. I think that has to be taken into account to a greater degree than this warrant article does, because, you know, our hands are tied in a certain way, and unless we have that information, you know, we'll have the preliminary rates, and we can talk about that all we want, but how often does that change? And apparently, it can change significantly, so.
It hasn't recently, as far as I know from looking. The MWRA publishes extensive spreadsheets, year-to-year, on the preliminary and final assessments, and we did include, and we do intend with this warrant article, in the last phrase, as determined by the Commission or Public Works, that there will be the-- determined by the commission or public works," that there will be the flexibility that, over time, as circumstances change, the practices can adapt. Can and should adapt.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to Articles 13 and then 14. Ms. Goff.
Good evening. The board should already be familiar with Warren Article 13, because the board filed this one.
Yeah, why don't you explain it to our viewing audience?
Sure. So, this Warren article essentially will enable the town to investigate community aggregation, which allows us to aggregate the electricity use for Brookline residents and negotiate electric supply contracts on behalf of the residents. I believe that this was something that was initiated from the Climate Action Committee, and after discussing with them and other members, it was determined the board would file this Warren article. And then, Article 14 is actually a resolution to try and gauge the town meeting sense of what the portfolio should look like. I'm not sure where the petitioners are for that one, but I would...
I saw them.
Now they've smacked out.
Well, there's one of them.
No. Matolo and Oldham.
Yeah.
For Oldham, then.
Well, Mr. Harris, no.
He's not a petitioner.
Okay.
So, Austin did attend the subcommittee meeting while we were in executive session, and so the subcommittee voted 4-1-1 in favor of Article 13, and I forget the vote on Article 14.
Is...
402 on Article 14.
Mr. Bukaid here to comment on these? We could take him, if we...
So, can you tell us a little about what the process, assuming we get a positive vote from town meeting, what's going to happen next?
So, we'd probably put out an RFP for an energy broker, and then the energy broker would then guide us through the rest of the process in terms of determining what the portfolio should look like. This, the resolution should help give the board a sense of where the community would like you to go in terms of what the mix should look like for renewable energy.
Right. And the whole point of this is that the town would negotiate through an energy broker what the default electricity option is going to be for all residential electricity customers.
In business.
And businesses, too. Okay.
Anyone not currently on a supply contract?
This Warren article just allows us to engage in this process. We're not locked into anything. We don't see any downside to voting for it.
It allows us to start the conversation, and should we decide to go out and procure electricity on behalf of all energy customers in the community, there would be an opt-out provision for people. So they could say, "I don't want to participate in this," and all they'd have to do is pick up the phone and say, "I want to go back to default service." So, we're not obligating anybody to anything, we're simply seeking the authority to start a conversation.
I would also like to point out to people that this would take some time, obviously. You have to do an RFP, and then we have to get a broker, investigate, blah, blah, blah. So, it could take, you know, six months, nine months, a year, who knows exactly? And if anybody in, of our vast television audience who's watching this is interested in making sure that they are using renewable energies now, they can sign up at massenergy.org, which is a nonprofit, and buys renewable energy for the grid. And it, it's a certain percentage of your bill, it's fairly reasonable, it's also tax-deductible. So, it's a good deal, and I urge anybody to do it. You can do it right now. It's very easy.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
I think the petitioners on Article 14 are...
Well, we're not...
Oh, we're not?
We're not talking about Article 14 yet. We're talking about Article 13. Is there anyone from the public? Well, Mr. Harris had his hand up. On Article 13, so this is the question, should we look into community choice aggregation?
John Harris, town meeting member, Precinct 8. I believe that Warren Article 13, the whole capacity for community choice aggregation, is an unbelievably huge opportunity for the town to act on behalf of all the citizens and all the ratepayers in the town. It is actually unprecedented, and it really, it may possibly, depending on how the legal future goes or whatever, be the biggest and most powerful thing the town could possibly do on behalf of renewable energy and on behalf of the global warming, the citizens, the ratepayers, et cetera, in the town. I just need to point out that, basically, it's become very apparent in the last just year or two, especially, that the interest of utility companies is very different than the interest of ratepayers. 30% increase in our electric bills for the six-month period last winter, and the justification the utility companies gave is that there was insufficient gas pipeline capacity to bring all the gas into the area. Well, we know, and by the way, there will probably be a 20% increase this year in our region, because there has been in other regions of the state, 20% already promised. And we know from the town meeting resolution of a short while ago, opposing the pipeline in the northern part of the state, that people in Brookline are anti-pipelines and are pro-renewable energy. We know also, from the utility stance and their 30% increase, that the utilities are strongly pro-pipeline. And we also learned at the State House just last week, there was a whole, a full evening of hearings, that they are strongly opposed to net metering of photovoltaics and wind generation. So, we've got a wide divergence between the interest of the utility companies on the one hand, and the citizenry and the ratepayers of the town, the state and the town on the other. So, Warren Article 13 has got three fantastic advantages for the people of the town. Number one, the bulk buying or bulk negotiating power that it offers can, is going to help everybody. The consumer protections, the town oversight of the broker that the town chooses will also help everybody. And finally, the values issues, which is going to be, which will be talked about at length when 14 comes up. This is a great way to express that as well. The only people who should oppose Warren Article 13 are those who have huge amounts of stock, in particular, in Brookline, Eversource, because that is our default provider right now. And I again mean the only people who should oppose Article 13. I'm really hoping that the board and the town meeting will have overwhelming support for 13, and I believe that will send a very strong and very necessary message to the utility companies, that the people of Brookline want renewable power, we want it as much as possible and as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vitolo, would you like to speak to 13?
Tommy Vitolo, Tommy, the member, Precinct 6, speaking in favor of Article 13. As you know, since 1997, the Board of Selectmen has had available to it the ability to look at other suppliers of electricity to be the default for the town. And in not doing so since 1997, the Board of Selectmen as a body has made an implicit choice in choosing the default supplier. That is, by not investigating and selecting anyone else, they're choosing to let the state default be the town's default, and that is Eversource, right? So, since 1997, the Selectmen could have investigated this and decided if they wanted a different supplier. I'm pleased that in 2015, the Selectmen are looking, interested in looking into it to see if there's a better choice for Brookline. And I hope that they are successful in doing so.
You have an interesting way of supporting the article.
And persuading us to support.
Our own article. Yeah. Thank you.
Would anyone else from the public like to speak on this? Mr. Lescoye.
Not to say much. I would second everything that John said, and I really appreciate that the Board of Selectmen has filed this Warren article. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the way we like to hear it.
Any discussion from the board?
No. I mean, we had discussion when we filed the article, and I, as I say, I think there's no doubt, it's all upside possibility here, and we should move forward.
It's all upside. We get an opportunity to look into the situation. If it seems like a really bad deal, we don't have to do it. The climate, as I reported to you last week, the Climate Action Committee has voted to support this unanimously, so I hope that we will do that as well. After all, we did file it.
Yeah, I'd like to vote favorable action.
It'll move us along the path toward a...
Let's hear 13, then we'll take the votes.
Let me just add one thing, that this is, there is precedent for this. There are a number of other communities around Boston, around Brookline, that have undergone this conversation and came out in favor of setting a default provider other than NSTAR or Eversource, and have procured either renewable energy through the conversation, or have collected a surcharge for other uses in the community related to electrical distribution. So, we're not breaking new ground here, and there's a lot of expertise out there that we can avail ourselves on.
Okay. So, let's move on to 14, and then we'll come back, and we'll vote it if we feel, after listening to 14, that we're ready. So, Mr. Vitolo.
Mr. Vitolo.
And Ms. Oldham.
Carol Oldham, Precinct 11.
Tag team.
So, you know all about Warren Article 13, which puts us at the advantage, because typically, we have to start by explaining and advocating for Article 13, and then get it to 14, right? But, we're past that, it sounds. So, Article 14 is a resolution, of course, non-binding, that seeks to provide the Selectmen some direction when working with an energy broker and going down a community choice path. Specifically, we're interested in the Selectmen working with a broker to find an energy product which is greener than we'd be getting otherwise. In fact, we gave some numbers, not to be ironclad, it is after all the resolution, but to provide some detail in that direction. And the numbers that we gave are 25% additionality in renewables for about seven bucks a month for the average householder. And you don't get to choose from a vacuum both a price and an item, you get to choose a quantity or a price. The market sets the other. And so what I did is, from work at Synapse Energy Economics, I called a number of brokers, and because their caller ID said Synapse Energy Economics, they answered. And I asked them, "What would it cost for New England Class 1 recs?" So, we're talking about wind, solar, cow power, built in New England.
Cow?
Cow, cow... Methane gas.
Fire, fire. Yes.
I thought methane was bad.
Cow power. The neighbors love it, because it cuts down on the smell. In any case, I asked them, "What would it cost, you know, for a typical household, a single-family household, to get from where we are now, which is roughly 14% large hydro, 10% renewable, and 75% nuclear oil gas coal, to 50% renewable, right? What if we added 25%? And, well, it's about seven bucks. If we were to be able to sign a contract today. We can't. We've got to go through this process. And 18 months from now, the numbers may look a little different. So, we didn't want the Selectmen to have the idea that we're demanding exactly 25% at exactly $7. That's not what we're doing. What we're saying is, we want to give the Board of Selectmen some direction, and trust that the Board of Selectmen, in working with the broker, will find a more green product at approximately that price point. We think you can get 25% for about seven bucks. We think about seven bucks is the right amount, that for most people, the way the cost-benefit analysis and say, "I could opt out, I can always opt out," but it's a lot greener for seven bucks a month, I can live with that. Of course, it's volumetric, if you live in an apartment, or run around after kids and turn the lights off all the time, it might be less than seven bucks. If you're using a lot of electricity every month, it might be a little more than seven bucks. But we think that that's about the right price point. If we went much more than that, more aggressively than that, we'd like to. We'd like to be 100% renewable. We're afraid that it would be too much more built, and there'd be a lot of opt-out, and that would be counter to the objective. Because the objective is a substantial reduction in carbon emissions. That's what we're after. We can do that in three ways. We can cut fossil fuel heating bill. That's really hard, right? That's home-by-home, deep energy retrofit, insulating, air sealing, it's really expensive, it's really disruptive. We can do it by reducing our carbon emissions in transportation, right? We can all switch to bicycles, and subway, and walking, and telecommuting. That's also really hard for a lot of folks. But it turns out, the electric sector, converting to dramatically lower carbon emissions is really easy. It's the Board of Selectmen getting approval for 13, finding a broker, letting that process play out, and signing the document at the end. And so, we felt that to get massive carbon emission reductions like this, going through the electric sector is not only the easiest for townsfolk, but it's also the only way that the town government has any ability to effect that change in a direct and comprehensive manner.
What did you have in mind when you wrote in here, "shall include, if feasible and appropriate," so that's always the qualifier, provisions that entitle participants to charitable deductions? Are there any such now?
Yeah. So, there are some suppliers, MassEnergy comes to mind, who allow for charitable deductions because they are a nonprofit. And so, if it made sense for the town to, when the town works with the broker, they'll look at a lot of possible suppliers, I'm sure MassEnergy will be one of them. If the broker, if the Selectmen choose MassEnergy, the MassEnergy product, then, assuming they dot the i's and cross the t's, that $7 a month that we've been talking about would be considered a 501(c)(3) charitable contribution, and would therefore be deductible under state and federal taxes as any other charitable contribution of that kind would be. We just want to make sure that when the Selectmen are deciding which provider to go through, they include that as a consideration.
Okay. And we would determine whether it actually makes any sense, right? Including whether that deduction is in fact available.
Yes.
Yeah. I get it.
So, I noticed that your resolution talks about price, and it talks about approximate mix. It doesn't talk about where the power is going to be generated.
That's right.
Geography.
That's right.
And I'm wondering if you wanted to comment on that.
Sure. We talked about it a lot, and my, speaking as Tommy Vitolo, 153 University Road, I personally think that it makes sense to go after New England renewables. However, you know, if the broker came back and said, "We have this great deal, it's from a wind farm in New York right over the border," hey, you know, maybe that actually makes sense. And so, we didn't want to be overly prescriptive, but in fact, the goal here is really to cut carbon. And so, if you buy wind from Texas, wind from Texas is economic without the subsidies associated with a program like this. And so, buying electricity from wind from Texas is not going to result in more wind farms in Texas. There's no incremental value there. Conversely, in New England, the developers need that additional money, or they can't bank the project. The wholesale energy price plus the wholesale capacity price isn't enough to get the loan. They can't develop the project. With this additional money, there's now enough to build that wind farm, to build that solar site, to build that cow power facility, and that means we actually end up with more renewable generation, which means we end up with less burning of fossil fuels, because every megawatt hour of solar means a megawatt hour less of coal or gas or oil.
But that's true whether it comes from Texas or...
No, it's not true that it comes from Texas, because Texas is an ERCOT, it's a different electric grid, it's not intertwined with ours. And while it may result in less gas or coal in Texas, it won't impact our mix at all, and it also means it won't impact our pricing at all, right? As we get more supply, as we encourage more renewable supply, price goes down.
So, what you're saying is that... So what you're saying is that it's a little bit like buying locally grown vegetables.
It's a little bit like buying locally.
You want to buy your product locally, so you increase the economic development of the region, and you increase the supply of that product in this region.
Right, and it has the added advantage, it creates jobs in New England, it cleans up the air in New England. To Tommy's point, you know, it's not going to clean up the air in New England if we're buying Texas wind, because we're not offsetting coal plants here. And it keeps our energy dollars at home. So it's, you know, it keeps it in the, in the economy.
We are offsetting coal plants here. If we're not buying...
Coal, or...
We're not buying electricity locally that is from coal-fired plants. So we are actually reducing that, even if we're getting our stuff from elsewhere, right?
No.
So is it wind fungible?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're actually doing is buying credits, which prevents the power companies from buying the credits, which forces them to develop other renewable sources to meet the...
Renewable portfolio standard obligations.
That they're required to under state law.
Okay.
So we're basically taking existing renewable energy sources, so they can't purchase it, so they have to go out and...
Build it.
Build more. So, you, you, buying from Texas actually doesn't affect that calculation, which is why it would be more beneficial for us in terms of air quality jobs, if we procured from New England.
So that's something, this, this whole consideration that we're talking about now is not in the resolution, but it's something we should be...
Correct.
Keeping in mind.
I think the petitioners were clear, that, you know, they didn't want to say, well, we just have to get it from, from New England, and then, you know, we, we could get it from Chatham, New York, which is right over the border. And, you know, it's still basically regional.
But ultimately, it comes down, there's going to be judgment by the selectmen in weighing the actual results from the RFP. And we didn't want to be overly restrictive, we wanted to provide direction, but leave the judgment to you five.
Well, I appreciate that.
I do, too.
A couple of things. And that, that means, for us, that we would have to become very, very educated on the whole process, and make those judgments on the basis of that education. This is not going to be an easy, easy task.
Well, we're going to have to hire somebody, a broker, who is going to be very knowledgeable, and will be able to...
But that, but it means that we have to incorporate into our understanding what the broker is presenting to us. The other, I have a, one question is, we have three things here you're urging us to do. One is increase use of renewables generally, which is a goal. Second is increase the use of renewable sources by 25%, which is a shall. And then, of course, the charitable issue. So why, why the distinction there? Shouldn't all these be goals? I mean, I know it's a nitpicking thing.
Well, as a point of fact, it's a resolution, and so, in that sense, it's all aspirational from our view. We can't...
So it should be written as...
We as town meeting can't require...
Yeah. So it should be written as aspirational, as opposed to, we shall?
You know, we wanted to make, we wanted to provide clear direction. And we tried to find the words that did that. If you think a slight change in words both allows town meeting to make it clear what we hope you undertake, and also provide the Board of Selectmen with the document that allows them to say, town meeting made the objective clear, and we want to go ahead and, and do what they asked us to do. If a, if a changing in words makes that easier for you, we're happy to, to talk about that.
Well, there is, there is, I mean, I think what Bernard's point is, on that second one, is, you're telling us, we shall increase the participants' use of renewable sources of electricity by an estimated 25% at an incremental cost of $7 per month. So, if we're, if we're working toward the goal of 25%, but it turns out it's not $7 per month, I mean, there's, there's...
Right.
You're kind of making this all a shall, and we, one part of it might, like, which is the more important part? So, the $7 a month, or the 25%?
That's the right question. The estimated gives a little wiggle room there, off the bat, right? Ultimately, again, if, if hypothetically, it was an estimated $7.20 for 25%, you might decide, we're going to do 25% for $7.20. If it was $17 for 25%, I'd say, you're going to want to dial that percentage back to something other than 20, lower than 25% to bring that $17 down. But without knowing exactly where the actual bids come in, we, we wanted to give direction without being overly specific on a resolution, which of course is non-binding anyway. So that was the, that was the challenge. If, if, again, we're happy to revise the language as long as we can keep that direction clear.
I think of maybe those numbers as a floor and a ceiling. And the 25% to me is like a floor. I think we wouldn't, we would strive very hard not to have less than that. More than that would be great. And we would also, the $7 would be a ceiling. We'd try very hard not to go above that ceiling, and if we got less, that would be great. So that's kind of how I think of it.
Yeah, but I think it could, you could, it could say that more closely to what she said.
So what if we, okay, number two.
So we want 25% or more, if possible, at a cost of...
I mean, I think we can just say, leave 25% and $7 in, but say, shall have as a goal.
Yeah, that's what I...
And that, you know, that makes it consistent, as well as, you know, does not reduce the urge to, you know, reach the 25% number.
I think one concern that we had with that, we wanted to, to word it in such a way that it made town meetings' desire for this as clear as possible. And I think one concern that I had of putting it as a goal, was the idea that, you know, we'll eventually get there, kind of thing. And I think the, I think the desire is to have town meeting vote on the idea that, like, this is where we'd like to start the program, is about $7, about 25%, you know, somewhere in that range, depending on what the broker is able to do. So I think rather than, it's just, to me, as a goal, sounds like eventually.
Isn't that what this whole thing's about? You know, this is what we're urging the Board of Selectmen to try to achieve, work with the broker, to get to these numbers?
Yes.
So, so, so yes and yes. We want, we're happy with, with, you're right, it's, it's, we're asking you to go out and try to achieve this. To be clear, we're asking you to go out and try to achieve this soon, not five years from now, right? It's, there's a process, there's a, there's a time period. But what we, what we didn't want is for you to come back and say, well, yeah, that goal is still out there. What we did is, we got 10% renewables for $3. And we'd say, well, no, that's not what we wanted. We wanted to, we were willing to spend a little more money to get more renewables. And we were, we were concerned if we used the word goal, that that would suggest, you know, eventually we'll get there, but in the meantime, we're going to do less than that. And so I think as long as the language and our understanding is that this process, should this pass, or even should it fail, and the selectmen think it's a great idea, that that's the conversation with the broker immediately, and that's what we're trying to achieve in the first iteration, not something we're going to kick down the road. That was our concern with the word goal.
I think if, if we, I, I get what you're saying. And, and to me, I'm, I look at this, I'm focused, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, okay, $7 is what town meeting is telling us is, is the price they're willing to pay. So, that might buy us, when we go out to bid, six months from now, whenever, that might buy us 23%, it might buy us 30%. But, you know, I'd be focusing on that $7. Now, it could be, market conditions change, and the $7 may only buy us 15%. So, it seems to me, I, I would want the wiggle room to be able to, to go for the 15% under those conditions.
Understood. And I think...
Well, and $7, I mean, just as a consumer, I realize mine would probably be higher, because I'm a single-family house, but I'd go to $10. I mean, so, what, what, I guess what, what, I guess what you're hearing us say is, I don't know, I'm, I'm just a little concerned about, I am concerned about the way that second one is worded, because, and it doesn't say which is more important, the 25% or the, or the cost. And so which one should we be?
And again, the challenge was, you know, if, if, we wanted to, without knowing what the bid is going to come in at, it's not must be $7, we'll take as much renewable as we can. If it turns out that, you know, you can get 30%, and it works out to be $6.87, hey, success. You know, we don't, we, it's, it's not, we didn't want to be overly specific, and then put the selectmen in a position where it turned out that, for whatever reason, meeting that overly specific number was more burdensome than something that was very close to what we want. We, we trust the selectmen to hear the direction and make a good decision that may not get us exactly those numbers because of market conditions. And frankly, if it's 7.25, or $6.20, if it's 25%, 28%, or 23.5%, that's the least of my concern. I want to get in that direction, and trust that, that you guys working with a broker can work out those details in a way that's, that's closest to the direction as possible, and not be too hung up on it. So, again, language that helps provide clarity for that, we're happy to, to edit. It's worth noting that the Capitol Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee supported it.
Without any language change?
Without any language change.
Wow.
That's an achievement.
It was, they voted, they voted your article four to one with one abstention. They voted our article four to zero with two abstentions. So, you know, maybe we should be telling you.
Yeah, I guess so.
We're not bound by the Advisory Committee.
Maybe you should have sponsored the first one.
Maybe there's an opportunity to put in a little bit of language that would make it not quite so rigid. I mean, I think that, that my colleagues on the board are seeing this as a little, little on the rigid side. Rather than changing that particular number, where it says that, now therefore be it resolved, that has as a minimum the below stated requirements of this resolution to the greatest extent possible, or some language like that, which would allow, you know, it gives you the flexibility, and signals to us, and lets town meeting say to us, we understand that you need some flexibility.
Yeah, and while that doesn't provide guidance about which number is more important, if you have to choose, it does, I think, give enough flexibility. And this conversation, I think, is helpful in making it clear. The flip side of all of this, and what we want to be cognizant of, is, you know, town meeting may want some specific, some specificity, so that they, they feel like what they're voting on is actually going to happen, and not be so squishy, that they're not sure what they're actually going to get from the Board of Selectmen. So we're, we're trying to balance that.
Well, but it's a resolution, and...
Squishy anyway.
I'll tell you...
The selectmen have a, have a long history of implementing resolutions that reflect on, on town business, not...
Well, that, and I think that's why we're quibbling about this wording, because we...
We want to get it right.
Yeah.
Right.
And we know we, we want to, you know, be involved in the spirit of it, and be upholding of the spirit of it.
I mean, I would say, the Community Choice Aggregation Plan shall strive to increase participants' use of renewable sources of electricity by an S, by at least 25%.
Shall strive, okay.
Yeah, at a cost of...
Well, I think that the $7 per month should actually be in parentheses, because that's just something that is put out there to illustrate the possible cost. I mean, it's, I mean, if we can get 30% at $10, I mean, we'd probably go for it. But, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a 25% floor that's more important, isn't it?
No.
Well...
I think this is where it gets really tricky. I think for Tommy Vitolo, yes, but there are a lot of town meeting members for whom...
No, I, I agree.
They don't want to, they effectively, they're willing to give you a check, but not a blank one.
Yeah.
And so we wanted to provide reassurance that there's an upper bound to, there's, there's a targeted upper bound. It's not exactly $7, it's $7.00. If you use a little more, it's a little higher. But we didn't want this to be a renewables-at-any-price sort of conversation.
But this, this is a carbon reduction article. So the real goal is to reduce our carbon footprint by increasing use of renewables.
Yes.
Now, you know, the idea of $7 is an important way of sort of giving people a sense of what the cost is. But the essential thing is the 25%.
Because it's opt-out, so, there's, there's the immediate political issue, but there's also the reality that, because it's opt-out, if, if the price is too high, we won't achieve our objection, because...
Everyone's going to opt out.
...
No, I'm not suggesting we increase the price. I'm just saying, put that in parentheses, so that it's not, so that the real focus is the 25%.
No, I disagree with that. And, because I, I think there needs to be a balance.
How about if we say, the Community Choice Aggregation Plan shall strive to increase participants' use of renewable sources of electricity by at least 25% of retail sales at an incremental cost to the average participating household of approximately $7 to $10 per month?
That's what I said.
Yeah.
I'm worried about the adding...
I, you know, I think, I think we should take this conversation offline, because I think it's, it's tough, at least for me, to sort of create language on the fly.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so...
But I was with you up until you said to 10.
And I understand that, you know, $10 for me may not be a big thing, but for the elderly on fixed income, my students, and, you know, low-income people, that, that's significant.
That's right, and that's why we need to have a balance.
I'm not going to fast introduce that, I agree.
And I think we need, town meeting needs to realize that we understand there needs to be a balance, and that...
Yeah, but, 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 I mean, seriously, if they, the report came back to, to us that, well, you can have 25%, but it's $10, not $7. I'd still go for it.
You, you would, and maybe I would, maybe I wouldn't, depending on what's going on.
Mr. Vitolo telling us we've deviated from town meeting's sense.
Well, that's, I guess what we're trying to say is, if that's what it came back at, and you went 25% for 10, or you went 21% for 7, we support you either way. Because we appreciate that there's judgment, and that we can't get exactly the best of goods that we want, we got to put something back on the shelf. You know, we want to get the direction, we want to get the, the bulk of the way there. If we have to, you know, adjust a little bit of that, then that's okay.
Yeah, I, I, I like Selectman Heller's direction of putting something in the, therefore be it resolved. But I also like Selectman Green's suggestion of having a goal, and I think we should take this offline, and let's look at the language. We'll, we'll talk to you guys, and then we'll, we'll come to...
I just hope the Capitol Subcommittee likes your language.
And, and again, just the, just the, just to restate the intention, the intention of the resolution was to give you all sort of a, a boundary within which to work, and do what you saw fit when the time comes to accept a plan.
And I think what you're hearing from us is, maybe the boundary's a little too firm.
Right.
I can over. I think there may be some other people that wish to speak on this.
Yeah, would anyone else wish to speak on this?
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Scanlon, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I just wanted to comment on Selectman Green's observation about having to get knowledgeable very quickly. That's a real crux of the issue. In my work with Mothers Out Front, I've probably talked to thousands of residents, along with CAB, as part of a campaign we've launched this year. And the issue does become complex so quickly. Most people don't even want to spend this amount of time thinking about their electric bill, but many really do want to do the green thing. And there's such a bombardment of information right now, you cannot filter through it all to get to the bottom of what you really want to do. to get to the bottom of what you really want to do. And what I'm really excited about these warrant articles, and urge you to vote favorably on, is that it really brings transparency to the process, and that's what people want to hear. They want to get to the bottom of this issue, and they want you to do the research to find out, "What should I do?" They don't have the time to research it themselves. And this, I just want to add, is the biggest thing Brookline can do with very little time and money. So, I really urge you to vote favorably on it. It aligns with my values and many in the community that I've met with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mary.
Ms. Dewar?
Mary Dewar, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I'm here because I think this is an extraordinary opportunity for Brookline, and I'm excited about this plan to solve the problem of electricity consumption with fossil fuels. This is a big step, because Brookline's carbon footprint, a large component is household electricity. And that we can, for a short amount of money that can be opted out by people who cannot pay, is an extraordinary moment in history. And we can make a statement on behalf of the whole world. I mean, the world is watching communities at the local level, the state level, the international level, and times have changed. And this is a community value that I think is extraordinary to express at Town Meeting, and I just urge you to support it. I think the details of the resolution, it would, I think, help a lot to just let go of the, of some of the discussion that I came in and just began to hear, because it really is a resolution, and the spirit of it will be explained in the Town Meeting discussion. And I think we will be as clear as we can and drive home the fact that this is an incredible opportunity. So, I urge you to sort of, I appreciate the nuance, and I think it's a really important questions and examination, but when it comes down to it, I think we can get by with what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Can I renew my motion for favorable action on Article 13 at this time?
Sure. So, I'll take that motion, and all those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'm going to suggest we table the vote on 14. We'll work out some language that makes everybody happy and lets us sleep at night. So, okay, so, we're moving on from warrant articles to Planning Board appointment. Ms. Kleckner?
Mr. Chairman, we have vacancies, two vacancies on the Planning Board and an expiring term. And although we have not had the opportunity to interview all applicants yet, there is a significant need at this time to fill at least one of the vacancies because of QAM and other practical requirements. So, on your calendar this evening, we are looking to make at least one of the, one of the appointments on the vacancies, and of course, Mr. Heiken is the incumbent, but if you choose to reappoint him at this time, I think that's fine as well. But at least one of the vacancies, we'd like to encourage you to do. So, if I could first deal with the vacancy, and I'm going to list the three applicants in order.
We're only filling one.
We're filling one of these. Blair Hines.
Aye.
Matthew Odens. William Rittling. So, Mr. Hines will fill the, one of the vacancies, and then we'll have, after we interview the final applicant, we will have another opportunity to make the final vacancy. And I don't know if the board...
Okay, I suggest we go ahead and...
Is interested in reappointing Mr. Heiken at this time.
Yeah, I think we should get that done.
So, why don't I put that before the board, a reappointment of Stephen Heiken for a three-year term.
Aye.
Very good.
Okay, that concludes our business for tonight. Thank you very much.